Committee, I guess, like a working committee.
Honestly, what he's saying does make a lot of sense with that. And I as administrator, if I'm not comfortable with something, I'm gonna ask you, you need to get a committee on this.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
This is not my expertise.
Well, and the other thing I was thinking of is like with staff relations, right? Like, I mean, if there's a stage three grievance, it says, right, in the collective agreement, that it's the staff relations or personnel committee that deals with that, right? So, I mean, there is still some need for it, so...
I agree, there's a need, but I'm not necessarily agreeing on work that can be done and should be done by paid staff.
Right.
But I do agree, Brian, there is that aspect when it does need to be a political. And I have no problem with coming to this table and saying, you know what, this is a political issue, who can be on this working committee to advise back to us?
Can we write the bylaw? Like, I know for like trappers, for example, in our bylaws for trappers, it says that we can strike like working committees so that when there are things...
That's reasonable, yeah.
Right, so, but it's pretty open-ended and it's not, you know, how it says right now that there's a planning and development and all these things, so can we kind of leave it...
You can establish working committees when needed.
Yeah.
It's just taking away the regular sitting down and discussing everything that we just went through tonight. It would just take away that aspect of it.
Right.
It's really doing the same thing we are now, is just saying, okay, we want this committee, we'd like you to look at this because it's out of our regime.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, 'cause sometimes, yeah, sometimes that person may not be available if it's like a daytime or evening, and it's good, like Randy was saying, like, hey, can you, can we get together kind of thing and just chat about it? Yeah. Okay.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
What come of the draft, you guys?
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I just have, I don't know if this is allowed, but can we go back to 4.10? I did have a question, but then we kind of like moved on just with the finance report. So, sometimes I notice, like, I'm just wondering, do you guys have like petty cash or something that you can use?
Yes.
Just 'cause like, sometimes I'll notice that there's like checks, I think there was one for like four dollars and sixty-two cents or something in this one, so like, it probably costs more money to write that check and cash that check than the four dollars. It was like to north of fifty-three industrial supplies.
Send an invoice, you gotta pay the invoice.
Well, and no, but I'm just thinking that like if it's for something...
Yeah, it was for six twenty-two, you're right.
Oh, right, sorry, six bucks. So, like, I'm just thinking like, for things like that, when it's smaller things, it might be a little bit more, you know, cost-effective, I guess, to just grab some petty cash and pay for it that way, as opposed to them having to send you an invoice and then you paying the invoice? I don't know if that's possible.
Well, just makes an addition up to say I got stuff going over there, but I'll talk to Jody about it, and she is trying to streamline, and maybe it's a matter of meeting with the business and saying anything under ten dollars, just add it to our next one.
Right, yeah, for sure.
Might be that simple.
Yeah.
Okay, 4.12, Simon Museum Board Appointments.
This is basically by resolution in accordance with the bylaw, we have to reappoint members. We have a reappointment for the following: Bedmit Cavish, Darnian Adamson, and Robin Reader.
Everybody's okay with that, your resolution? That was easy. 4.13 Strategic Organizational Planning.
Basically, we usually meet in November, and this is to reappoint members to your committees, but this is also to go through where we are at with upcoming objectives and our focus. So, I would like to look at something early January. Jody, who is gonna discuss the budget, but I think we can probably do that somewhat at the same time, because it's gonna be part and parcel. The budget discussion and our objectives are gonna be very close knit on this. I'm suggesting the first week of January, possibly the fourth and the fifth.
Can we do the fifth?
I'm out of town until January 12th.
Till when?
January 12th. I don't...
Yeah, I'm out of town from the fourteenth to February the first.
We're going from the twenty-eighth...
Gotta go where the sun is, man.
Twenty-eighth of December to the third of January.
Okay, well, getting us all together at one time might not be as easy as...
That's not gonna work.
Yeah, okay, so let's just have it on the fourth.
No, I wouldn't be home till the thirteenth anyway.
Fourth, fifth, what works best for everyone?
Uh, fifth works better than the fourth.
Yeah, fifth looks better.
May the fourth be with you.
So, I'm not here.
I wouldn't be here, no. I'll be gone first.
We can maybe ask Jody to provide you a step ahead of time.
Sure.
I can provide a little bit of a draft to you as to what we had. And realistically, we just did some objectives, and I think we need to finish with what we've started. That's one of my main concerns and one of my main pushes. We've got a really good start, and I would hate to see us change course, but it's to review what we're at. Like, that to me is one of the biggest thing. That's something we can get to you ahead of time before you go on your vacation.
Yeah, I'll maybe try and do up some comments and that sort of thing before I go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Who said it's a vacation?
Oh!
Not your time, you're really late.
Well, someone has said it's not a vacation.
I'm smart.
You didn't correct us until then.
Okay, so you'll let us know what, set a date?
We're staying the fifth for now, but we'll go with the fifth, then we'll send out an email.
Good stuff. All right, 4.14, Library Annex Doors.
I don't even know where to go with this, guys.
That's all funny.
I'll go.
This is an overall solution here that we need to look at. This is like, we go through the same issues here. We have people doing their thing in beyond our building. It is disgusting, yes, for cleaning it up constantly. I don't know, I don't know what to do here, shy of, I honestly am at my wit's end with this, because all we do is move problems from one area to the other.
Yeah, for sure, that's a big thing. I think we need to look at maybe something of a, not a permanent, but maybe a temporary solution. I think Margaret hit the nail on the head with me, we should put some porta potty somewhere in the community.
Why you say that? That was me.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Margaret. Crystal, was that you? Sorry. You guys both have councils as your name for your email, so it comes in, it doesn't come in as Margaret or Crystal, it comes in as council. So, just so you know.
Okay.
That's why.
I usually say Margaret at the end, I type it in, Margaret.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I have a signature too.
List is crap, we're off topic just a little.
Sorry, way off topic. I think that we should maybe look at maybe doing that on a temporary trial situation basis. Honestly, I don't see what the other answers are here. We, like you said, we could give, get the library their gate, and close off their annex, so that it isn't a hole in the wall type of thing, and, but it's just gonna move it somewhere, it's gonna move it over here, it's gonna move it...
Which unfortunately we do, the whole downtown area, unfortunately, behind every business, is like a big old outhouse. I feel for those people, and I would sure like to look at something we could do for the community as a whole, because it just keeps relocating. Now it's going into residential areas that aren't far off the beaten path.
So, I made a Facebook status and made it public and just asked for some input from the community, just because, I mean, a lot of people have different ideas, so there are some like, pretty cheap ways that you can kind of reinforce a porta potty, like you just pretty much put three walls around it and attach it to something that's a little bit structurally sound, so that it can't be pushed over or that kind of thing. And, I mean, that could be a temporary solution, but one that got brought up by a few different people was the Kinsman Campground. Randy Manich was one of the people who commented about the Kinsman Campground and said that there's, 'cause it's concrete, pretty much, right, so that you could put in almost like jail-style toilets and sinks that are like indestructible and pretty easy to clean. There's like a coating that you could put on the walls, so that you could just send somebody in there with a pressure washer. Somebody made a comment about how, you know, there are a lot of people who have community service hours that they need to work off, so maybe that's looking at teaming up with MMF, and that could be how they, I mean, 'cause when they do community service, a lot of times it is grunge work, so maybe those are the people who go in and clean the bathrooms and put some toilet paper and stuff in there, but I think that it's a way to kind of contain the problem, and, I mean, you're giving them a place to go, 'cause, I mean, the sad reality is, they have to go. So, if they have no access to washrooms, like, they're either gonna go on their pants or they're gonna go on the street. So, if we can kind of give them a place to use, and I don't know if we can use the community ambassadors when they're out and about to kind of patrol it, 'cause like, there was concerns with, you know, like the going ons that would happen in there, I don't know if there's a solution to that, but, I mean, at the same time, if you're kind of giving them something that's their own, I mean, a lot of them are gonna have respect for that and kind of police it themselves as well, because they're not gonna wanna lose it.
What does somebody take as?
What do they do in other communities? We're not the first community to have these issues.
A lot of places do have like outhouses or porta potty-type things that are just kind of randomly around, and then a lot of places have homeless shelters that are 24/7, so people know where those shelters are, or there's friendship centers or that sort of thing.
And that is the key, is having a 24/7 facility.
Is that an issue? Like, I mean, we need to get to the issue, and I think sometimes we wanna invent a solution from scratch, right? We need to...
I think the answer is making sure the friendship center gets that grant to operate 24/7.
So, I talked to people in Thompson and Swan River, and there are public bathrooms. Thompson has them, they're pretty much like an outhouse that has three walls around it, so that it can't be pushed over and that sort of thing. They're in pretty, I mean, not super visible places, 'cause nobody wants to see like a porta potty, but they're not tucked away in a dark corner either. And Swan River has public washrooms, and they also, I mean, both places have 24-hour homeless shelters as well.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at, so we go put out porta potties, or we don't see, nothing changes, right? Like, we should talk to maybe the Canora, I don't know where, other examples, Saskatoon or northern Saskatchewan, somewhere, I've been through this before. Is our biggest issue that the homeless shelter's not open, is it before we started going and coming up with all these ideas and we never solve the problem, right?
But I think, like, honestly, even having the homeless shelter open 24/7, it's not going to solve the problem.
Oh, no.
It, the problem existed when this homeless shelter was 24/7, it just wasn't as blatant, because they, some of them would choose...
I can tell you as a business owner, or not a business owner, but it's no worries, like Margaret's rolling her eyes, right? Having it not open, it's unbelievable.
Oh, I know, I know.
It's unbelievable, so to say it's not that much, it's hugely...
I mean, for that issue, for the issue of them not having a bathroom to use, right? Like, it is, it's a huge issue, it's a huge issue.
It's worse not having 24...
But having the homeless shelter open 24/7 is only part of the solution. There is such a big, huge, wide variety of issues that just having the homeless shelter 24/7 still isn't really gonna solve the problem. What it's gonna do is it's gonna take it out of sight.
Well, it's also a huge step forward by having it open.
Right.
Huge step forward.
It is.
As opposed to, like, this, I'm not, like, if we could get those porta potties up tomorrow and they'd be up there for the next month or two, I'm all for that, man, I'm just all for that. You know, but we gotta take a big step here, we have to make sure these people get that grant. And I don't know what we do about that, I don't know how we do that, but that's, you know, that's why, that's why, you know, sending a note off, I don't think is the solution. I think we need to go in there, like five or six of us, sit down and say, what do we need to do to get this done today?
You know what, maybe that's not a bad idea, because it's obviously not working with us, asking for the information, maybe that's the political aspect, saying, you come to us, you wanted this, we wanted the information, what can we do to make sure you get it to us? Because it's gonna miss the ship, and that's the sad reality, and we as administration cannot go in there and tell them, you need to give us this...
Oh, I know.
Or you're not getting it.
I know, I can.
So, I think this is maybe a good idea.
Brian?
I was gonna say, I think it's really critical and important that we do something, and I think the immediate step is the porta potty idea. It's not the solution, it's not the long-term, but it is the short-term, and it demonstrates that this council is concerned and trying to take action. Once you do the first, take that first step, it's natural progression, you're moving forward, the next step is gonna find the more permanent, whether it's Oscar's Place or whatever, but I think we need to do it, and I would think that we could be looking at it in terms of a resolution to move it forward.
And, I mean, one thing that we need to remember is Oscar's Place still has capacity, right? So, even if they are open 24/7, they're only allowed so many people in there at any given time, so I think that, like, really, as a long-term solution, we need to think of a public washroom, whether that's in Devon Park, in the Kinsman Campground Building, or whatever, like, that seems like a good place for it, the structure's already there. Yes, it's gonna cost some money to do it, but...
That's coming up next.
Yeah. Something needs to...
Okay, so, Jen?
Can you go into homeless shelter and just use the washroom and leave?
Yes.
During, you can't during the day.
It's closed.
It's closed during, they're open, they're open from 11:30 to 1:00 for lunchtime.
No, even if it was open 24 hours, would you be allowed to go in there and use the washing?
It would depend on the capacity. If they were like at full capacity and they couldn't have any more people in there, they would, right?
You gotta go to the bathroom, no, sorry, before you can't.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I mean, like, yes, it is, it will help, but, I mean...
It'll help tremendously.
It will help, but there's also, we need, we really need all levels of government to step up here, because there's like addictions issues, there's mental health issues, and we don't have the resources in this community to deal with any of that. There's social issues, there's housing issues, I mean, the list goes on and on and on, they can't live in the homeless shelter forever. So, like I said, while it would be a tremendous help and they could get some support and resources from there, we're pretty much, all we would be doing was taking the issue off the street and kind of hiding it. At the end of the day, the people still wouldn't have a place to live, they still wouldn't be able to get treatment for their addictions, they wouldn't be able to have access to the mental health, like, supports and resources that they need, like, it's such a big, huge issue.
So, I know, it's a huge issue. It's like the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, and you gotta deal with it. So, if it's bit by bit by bit, then that's how you do, you can't figure out how to solve all of that problem and then say, okay, now let's move forward with the plan, 'cause there are issues, I believe, Crystal, that we haven't even thought about yet.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes?
I know in the past council, like, previous council has asked the outside communities, because there was a little bit of a...
This is the next issue.
And that's the problem. We've asked the outside communities to come and join us and try and come up with a solution. We've set the meetings up, not one person ever attended.
Okay, so are we gonna get some porta potties by the library annex doors? Let's get back on topic, 'cause it'll come up in the next issue.
So, we put that as a resolution for the next meeting to, like, just 'cause that's not something that we have?
I don't know if it's like by the library annex doors is the best place, I think it should be someplace that's a little bit more visible and more, better lighted, I guess.
We'll just have to do a rental, 'cause we don't have people to clean it, it's a rental is what you do, 'cause we don't own them.
And, I mean, maybe if we talk to some of the different companies that supply porta potties and just let them know what we're trying to do, and that it's kind of a temporary thing, like, maybe they'd be willing to, I don't know, rent for six days and we'll give you the seventh day free type thing, or something like that, like...
Maybe just by the month, and then you pay for pump-offs.
Right.
It's not expensive to actually...
Which is what we need, we don't provide that service anyway, so that's kind of what we're not.
Well, depending what you think not expensive is. We had to rent them for Street Festival, and, I mean, we got two porta potties, and I think it was only fifty bucks for the four hours of the 24/7.
Yeah, let's just find out what the cost is and then get that.
That's not a bad thing.
Okay.
Or, I mean, maybe they have like a used porta potty that, you know, they wanna get rid of, and it's, I guess we still have to pay for pump-offs, but...
We don't wanna own it.
No, that's true, that's true, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
So, we're not doing anything with doors here and looking at securing for now, we're looking at trying to fix the solution, is that what we're looking at?
Boy, if we could just, you know, put a portable wall up there, portable wall, I'd be so happy.
Well, hey, I just, I have a little bit of background information, 'cause I'm on the library board or whatever. They had one quote come forward for a gate to be installed across the annex entrance or whatever. There was $5,000 budgeted within our budget for repairs, I guess, door, annex door, I'm not sure what the actual listing was on the budget, but something for the annex door. And they've got a quote in hand right now for less than the $5,000 budgeted, but they've only got one quote. They don't have a second quote, as of right now, they're unable to obtain one, and that's just kinda where it's sitting, so we need to, we don't have, they don't have a second quote. So, they've got one quote for less than the amount that's been budgeted for, and they could get a gate put across there that locks and people can't get into the alcove of the annex entrance, and, but they have one quote as of right now, so...
Well, I hadn't, I didn't know that, why didn't they move forward that quote then?
I think it's their problem, not ours. I think it's their problem.
And again, because now it just means we're gonna be picking the horn, crap in the back of our ear, just so you know that. We're just moving the problem.
I understand that, but we have to do something, right? We, 'cause I don't think it's fair to ask the employees of the library to start their day with a shovel.
But is it fair to ask?
But we're starting our day with a shovel, and now we're making...
I don't think that's right either, but, like, you know, you fix the world in a day, I don't, I don't know.
I'm gonna have a hard time telling my employees, I expect you to pick up the poop, but for everyone else, like, and even Main Street, every business owner, it's okay for you to pick up the poop, but...
I think we need to do one...
I do like the idea of this, like, with porta potty. I think that needs, that was a good solution, I think it's a start.
It's temporary.
It is temporary, but, I mean, at least it's something until we can figure out what the long-term solution is, right?
Brian, one more thing, and then we're gonna...
I was just gonna comment that...
It's the same subject next.
I can appreciate what I'm hearing about the library and stuff, but we also have other facilities and buildings all around town that could have the same or a similar problem, and we can't solve their problems. It's a library building, it's a library's problem, it's a museum building, it's a museum problem, that sort of thing, going forward, and we shouldn't interfere with their business, let them deal with it. Otherwise, we have our people having to deal with our buildings.
Okay.
So, for now, we're looking at porta potties.
We are.
So, sorry, just before we get off topic here...
It's the same topic in the next item.
No, no, it's not, because, again, we're talking about the alcove entrance for the library, they've got $5,000 in the budget, or we've got $5,000 in our budget for them to put up a tempor, or not even a temporary, a locking gate, so that they can close off that alcove. They've got a quote for less than the budgeted amount, they have one quote. Are we doing anything with that, or are we just leaving it as is?
So, I think...
I think that's a library board decision.
Yeah, like I was gonna say, like, I think with any other board, right, like Museum Board, Kelsey Rec, whatever, that they are the ones who need to make that decision, and then if they need council approval to spend that money or whatever, then it would come forward to us as a resolution, right?
Okay, fair enough?
Yep.
Okay, all right then, 4.15, Kinsman Campground Building.
So, can we maybe get some quotes on what it would cost to turn that into a public washroom, just...
Honestly, I've been in that building.
Building is...
There's a reason it was 100% closed down, it may be made of cinder block, that's why unfortunately the $2,000 didn't cut the mustard for removal of it. Eric was trying to arrange for it this summer, then we had someone come forward and saying, you know what, what a waste of a building, we really wanna talk about this further, and it never, never ended up going anywhere. And, again, the $2,000 wasn't gonna cut it, but all of the washrooms, all of the sinks, all of the water, all of the pipes is all smashed in those, in those facilities. So, it's not in very good shape, and it's not gonna be a cheap fix.
Oh, it's gonna be huge.
So, let's just...
I guess where I'm getting concerned is we're talking about these wonderful community spray parks and this and that, I'm scared that's gonna start becoming a public shower, like, we need to get the stuff moving by the time those facilities are open, right? And that's what we're doing, like...
And, I mean, so maybe one of the things is, like, put in a couple of public showers where you put in a dollar, and, yeah, it's not gonna recover our cost, but, I mean, maybe it'll help pay for the water that gets used in the shower, or, I mean, and, I mean, there's grants out there that we could apply for, we could apply for $25,000 from Neighborhoods Alive, we can apply for $50,000 from Community Places, and, yes, you need matching dollars, but, I mean, maybe there are contractors who would donate things, and, you know what I mean, like, I think that...
So, let me say this out loud, why is this our problem? Why is this our problem? Where is the, where's the RM, where is OCN, where is Moose Lake, where's Puckettewagon? Where are, these people live, are from those communities?
Absolutely.
And yet they come to our community, and we have to, we have to foot the entire bill? I don't think so.
I agree, but, so let's, let's think about this, so this, this has been a huge issue, but we've never really had a solid game plan to try to start helping the problem, right? So, now, we say, we wanna build public washrooms and showers, so that these people have access to them, so then maybe we go to the RM, and we go to OCN, and we go to Puckettewagon, and we go to Moose Lake, and we say, listen, this is what we are planning to do, some of these people come from your community, this is what it's going to cost, would you be willing to help us?
Buy a toilet.
Well, yeah, so, yeah, maybe they do, maybe they buy a toilet and we put a plaque on it that says, courtesy of Moose Lake Chief and Council or something, like, you know what I mean? But I think before, like, I mean, we knew that it was a problem, but what, what are we going to do about it? Like, just telling them that it's a problem and we need to do something about it, but not actually having a plan of what do something about it means?
So, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's invite these people to a meeting and see if we can't come up with a solution to move this forward, 'cause it's not our bill.
No, it shouldn't be all of our bill, but at the same time...
We currently invest about $50,000 a year into this issue.
Right.
Where everybody else contributes upwards of zero.
Right.
And that, that's just not fair, that's just not fair.
But in saying that, Jim, and I'm sorry, Crystal, for interrupting, but in saying that, the public doesn't know that, Jim. The public doesn't realize that we're putting into the chaplaincy and that we're doing all these things, as band-aids, not band-aids, we're trying to come up with a solution, but those are things that nobody sees. The chaplaincy program is such a successful program, problem being, there's not enough money for it, but nobody sees that we put into that. You know, just things like that, there needs to be a little bit more awareness that we're not just sitting here and ignoring it, we're doing something about it, it's finances, it's resources, it's responsibility.
I have been, in the last year and a half, I have been to ministerial association meetings, I've been to community meetings, I have been to, or groups of mental health people meetings, I have, I have been to MLA meetings, I have been to, and oh, it's the same story. Well, we, we might be able to get that, well, we could maybe do that, we could do this, well, what about that? And nothing gets done, nothing gets done, except we get a bill. And, and our, and our town is labeled a crap hole.
Right, but, I mean, so...
This is wrong.
Let's take the lead a little bit and lead by example, and let's do something, like, let's come up with a game plan and say, listen, we know that this isn't going to totally solve the problem, but we hear that this is a really big issue right now, and we have decided that we would like to do this about it, this is what it's going to cost, and, again, approach all of those places, and, I mean, I hate to sound pessimistic, but we can invite all these people to a meeting, but, Jim, I've sat at those same meetings with you, and you know who wasn't at those meetings? People from all the outline communities. It was all people locally that already are very aware of what the problem is and that it exists and that something needs to be done, but none of those other people showed up. up. You know, I didn't see anybody from OCN, I didn't see anybody from the RM, I didn't see anybody from any of the other surrounding communities, unfortunately. So, I mean, we can try for a meeting, but I think it's better...
So, so we're going to foot the bill of figuring out how much it's going to cost to turn the, the Kinsman Campground Building into a cinder block toilet and shower facility?
So what, what kind of bill are we talking about that we're going to foot?
Someone's going to have to figure out how much it's going to cost.
It's going to be a cost, there's going to be huge costs, and that, that was our question on here. What are we doing with this building? Do we do anything with it, or do we just budget in 2016 and get rid of it for 20 grand?
So I'm not saying, like, let's go ahead and let's, let's redo the washrooms and everything if we don't have, it's like anything else that we do, if we don't have the funds to do it, we don't do it. But what I'm asking is, realistically, how much money is it actually going to cost to do a little bit of background searching and to get an idea of, of what it's going to cost, so that we can at least have some sort of an idea if it's even plausible? If it's going to cost a million dollars to do it, obviously not plausible. If it's going to cost $30,000 to do it, or $50,000 to do it, that's...
It's going to cost $50,000, depending on whether or not you can, there's water there available now, but it's going to cost $50,000.
We were just talking, I just saw in the previous one, $50,000 to put a wall across the annex door. You have any idea what it's going to cost to do that building? Five times that.
That's horrendous.
That's a quarter million dollars.
But, like I said, so maybe there's local...
You could do that for 50,000 dollars. It's sitting there, it's an open...
Yeah, so, I mean, so maybe there's, maybe there's local contractors, like I said, who are even like, you know what, this is a huge issue, and, you know, tug on their heartstrings a little bit, and so they say, maybe they'll charge us for materials and give us a discount on labor, like, I don't think it's...
We've got to stop building our model around, we're going to get a grant from the government, we're going to get guys from outline, and, and all the businesses are going to, everyone's tapped out, right?
No, I understand that.
So we've got to stop saying, like, well, we'll tug on their heartstrings and they're going to solve our problem. We've got to solve the problem.
It's the money issue, it always has been a money issue.
Right, but, like I said, like...
We have the skills now to go in and look.
And, like, anything else, if we don't have the money to do it, then we don't do it, but, I mean...
Right, but we're already starting off by saying, here's our model, we'll, we'll apply for grants, we'll go to outline communities and ask for money, and we'll ask the contractors to take a cut on their pay, right? So if that's how we're leading into it, it's not going to work. I think day one, we just need to go and find out whether that building's usable.